...of the situation in the Auburn Public Schools.
What drives the budget in the Auburn schools each year is the mission and vision. Our mission being to strengthen connections through rigor, relevance, and relationships. And our vision, which was recently affirmed, as was the mission at the strategic planning, being to prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. These are our core values that we live by: student-centered decision-making, having high expectations for all students, ensuring that our environments are safe and respectful, that we respond to needs based on data that we have before us, that opportunities be equitable, and that we always stay committed to continuous improvement. As Ken Blanchard said, genuine success does not come from proclaiming our values but from consistently putting them into daily action, and that's in fact what this budget Each step along the way, though, we asked ourselves the question, how will this impact students and their achievement? We started off by setting priorities, as we do each year: school committee and leadership team collaboratively. So student safety is always a top priority of ours. It's paramount in the work that we do and the environments that we provide. Student achievement, we always want to see our students continue to excel, and we're constantly looking for new opportunities through which they can do so. Transitions: this upcoming summer, we refer to as the Summer of Transitions, we'll open a new middle school, we'll open a renovated current middle school, soon to be named Swanson Road Intermediate School, and Mary D. will pack, will transition to Packerchog. Finally, we will return JB and Mary D., assuming all of those transitions go well, back to the town at the end of the school year, end of the summer, I should say. Additionally, class size: we recognize that class size is a factor in setting high expectations in classrooms. Technology: we've been able to utilize the FFNE budget from our new middle school, and along with that, and CIP funds, we'll have an iPad initiative in grades six through 12 next year, but we also have numerous technologies available at the grades below that. Textbooks: we'll have a new math textbook series, actually utilizing funds from this year, and then we'll start to look towards ELA, and we always are looking to be sure that we have up-to-date textbooks for our students, including our Advanced Placement texts. Additionally, professional development: we have a strong and robust program within the district that really addresses the needs of our teachers and staff, because we believe in continuous improvement, not only for our students, but certainly for our staff as well. You see evidence of the strategic plan values throughout this budget, and that's indicative of 120-plus community and school representatives who met in the fall of 2013 and worked throughout last school year to put together our strategic plan. And then finally, educator evaluation: Auburn really stands out as a leader across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts in our implementation of educator evaluation, and I think that is mainly because we have said it's all about what happens in classrooms, and it's all about teaching and learning. So here with our overarching view of strengthening connections through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Each year, because we start our budgeting process so early, we have to make some assumptions. We utilize the October 1 counts, and those numbers continue to vary as we go throughout the year. We also have applied as anticipated offsets in the budget, and you'll see later that totaled nearly $2 million, all grant funds that we anticipate coming in, both in the IDEA Title I and Title II grants, as well as some smaller ones, too. We've anticipated 124,000 Medicaid receipts being reimbursed to us; that's a reimbursement program that we receive. And also have applied $75,000 as an offset based on busing fees of $100 per student for those who are required to pay. Additionally, we've used offsets from our revolving accounts, our before and after-school programs, our building rental accounts, our preschool and athletic revolving, all in an effort to minimize the budget. We've applied school choice offsets, using the numbers that we currently have in place this year: 31 at Auburn High and 15 at Auburn Middle. Our circuit breaker reimbursement, those are for extraordinary special education costs, we've projected at 60%. We've not gotten direct guidance yet on this, but that's a fair, we believe, a fair projection to make. In all of our IAs and ABAs, we note them in their current assignments. There's always movement, because they follow the students for whom they provide support, but they're noted in their current locations. Additionally, as I said earlier, we know that Auburn Middle will transition to Nine West Street. Costs for that transfer are included as part of the project costs. Julia Bancroft in Packerchog will transition to Swanson Road Intermediate. We have put a value in our budgets of $10,000 to assist with that move. We do believe, we do know that the Worcester County Sheriff's Department will be assisting with that, the inmates will be assisting with that, however, we've built in some additional funds for movers and the like. Mary D., as I said, will transition to the Packerchog School, and again, we'll be utilizing inmates for that, but we have still set aside a value of $10,000, which we believe will be needed to assist with the movement as well. In assuming that JB and Mary D. are returned to the town, as we believe that they will be, there will be a cost to heat those next year unless they are repurposed, but those values have not been included in here; the town has assumed those values. So our draft budget is $23,488,154, which represents a 2.21% increase over the approved budget this year in FY15. We have the offsets, as I noted, totaling nearly $2 million, including from all available funds: school choice, busing, Medicaid receipts, building rental, before and after-school accounts, and that's all really done in an effort to minimize the impact to the taxpayers of Auburn. As you note here, this actually looks over a seven-year period, the increases, or in fact, in the first year, the decrease that was actually awarded to the town per the school department's request, that over that, those seven-year period, equates to a 1.81% average increase. Obviously, there's variability among the years, but we believe that that really speaks to the commitment that the school department has shown to work with the town of Auburn as we weather any fiscal challenges before us as a team. However, what's critical to note is we also believe that we've been able to maintain our budget that really keeps our focus on our mission of preparing students for the challenges and opportunities of a changing world. In this budget, you will see evidence of new staffing positions. They actually total 9.2 new positions, but we've eliminated six positions in total for a net gain of 3.2. At the elementary schools, to add a half-time psychologist, at Bryn Mawr will be two IAs, one for inclusion at kindergarten and one required due to an IEP. At the Packerchog School, there'll be one IA inclusion for kindergarten. At Swanson Road Intermediate, will be a tech media specialist, as well as an LPN to supplement the school nurse. At Auburn Middle, is a guidance counselor and a half-time custodian to be sure that we're able to keep that facility open on weekends for school and community use. At Auburn High School, a special education teacher, a .2 guidance, which would enhance the .5 that we have there, extend that individual's hours, adding a lacrosse program, as well as an assistant girls' ice hockey coach. And then across the district, a speech teacher. But as I noted before, so these total $328,850, the equivalent of 9.2 FTEs. However, we're eliminating six positions for a total net gain of 3.2, FTEs being full-time equivalents. Throughout this budget, and you will hear shortly from the administrators, and they have given presentations on a number of occasions, we really stay true to how does this actually impact what it is that we believe: rigor, relevance, and relationships? And whether it is in terms of rigor with the Keys to Literacy Training or the iPad Integration, the co-teaching and inclusion that we have in place? In terms of relevance, really making sure that the training that we provide is job-embedded and linked very tightly to our district priorities. We have collaborative summer work that takes place, as well as district and school improvement goals that are tightly linked and match up with our strategic plan. In terms of relationships, the co-teaching and inclusion is a perfect example of when teachers and staff work together, how it strengthens the support we have for all children. An ongoing community service that we provide to the community members of Auburn, it being a reciprocal relationship, we receive from them and believe in the importance of giving back as well. And then finally, responding to needs based on data, as I said early in the presentation, we ask ourselves constantly, how will this impact students and their achievement? So tonight, we are here for the public hearing, and this is in compliance with MGL Chapter 71, Section 38N. We have, as we know, our moderator, Mr. Charles Baker, who will be here. We mailed invitations to everyone with a strong commitment of the school committee and leadership team that we maintain transparency, not only in our budgeting, but in all decisions that we make, as our goal is always to address questions that are asked, believing it is a team effort. The administrators' budget presentations have all been posted onto the website; we have our budget up there, any new documents are added to there as well, and again, the goal being transparency. So this evening, each administrator in order will read aloud his or her line items, sometimes in their subtotal. If you have any questions on any section thereof, what you're asked to do is just to say "hold," and the moderator will note that, and we will go back to that at the end of that administrator's reading. In closing, Tom Landry said setting a goal is not the main thing; it is deciding how you will go about achieving it and staying with that plan. What this budget does, we believe, is really helps us stay with our plan of setting the goal of continuous improvement for all students in the Auburn Public Schools. We believe our students, just as you, deserve nothing less than the best, and we certainly appreciate your past and anticipated future support as well. Thank you.
And the first person who will be speaking this evening for Auburn High School is Casey Handfield.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Principal's office and assistant principal's office: $218,785. Main office secretary is $112,618.35. Instructional staff special education: $265,721. Instructional staff regular education: $3,202,38. Instructional staff specialists: $437,909. Library media specialist: $80,659. Guidance staff: $328,175. Guidance secretary: $37,379.3. Instructional assistants: $92,441.13. Special education ABAs: $81,504.49. In-school suspension monitor: $28,000. Custodians: $314,974.80. School nurse: $54,136.55. New positions, as alluded to by the superintendent, there'll be a guidance increase of .2 at a cost of $20,146, and a new special education teacher at a proposed cost of $49,848. New position total: $69,994. Salary subtotal: $5324,335.34. Contracted services: $14,983. Total salary: $5339,318.34. Substitutes: $49,100. Postage: $6,000. Principal's office supplies: $1,000. Printing supplies: $23,500. Principal's dues: $5,704. Principal's professional development: $5,500. Commencement: $11,000. Classroom supplies: $19,196.70. 504 supplies: $250. Art supplies: $4,675. Staff travel: $500. Library media center supplies: $12,175. Audiovisual supplies: $3,000. Guidance supplies: $9,216,35. Wood technology: $5,940. Graphics: $12,000. Curriculum competitions: $13,570. Curriculum awards: $2,242. Fuel, oil, and propane: $66,066.17, with an offset of $5,000, for a total of $61,066.17. Electrical: $203,378.93, with an offset of $15,000, for a total of $188,378.93. Water: $7,850, with an offset of $200, for a total of $7,650. Sewage: $5,539, with an offset of $2,835, for a total of $2,704. Phone: $10,115.12. Building repair and maintenance: $75,000. Field maintenance: $10,000. Custodial supplies: $13,483.73. Total support costs: $503,867. Total building costs: $5,892,285.33. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
And next, for the Auburn Middle School, Joe Gaggen.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Principal's office and assistant principal's office: $199,335. Secretaries: $108,210.55. Instructional staff special education teachers: $361,430. Instructional staff regular ed teachers: $253,761. Specialists: $407,553. Guidance and counselors: $159,116. Instructional assistants special education: $180,568.39. Nurses: $59,292. Custodians: $179,985.60. A new guidance position for six, seven, and eight: $54,957 for a 1.0 FTE. New custodian: $20,347.56 for a .5 FTE. Salary subtotal: $3991,699.74. Contracted services: $9,798. Total salary: $41,497.74. Substitutes: $35,500. Postage: $2,500. Principal's office supplies: $662. Printing supplies: $12,462. Principal's dues: $950. Principal's professional development: $3,000. Commencement: $3,105. Classroom supplies: $17,139. 504 supplies: $250. Staff travel: $500. Textbooks are in the school-wide budget. E-books are in the district-wide budget, and library supplies and books are in the building project. Audiovisual supplies: $1,655. Guidance supplies: $1,340. Art supplies: $2,500. Awards and incentives: $1,000. Fuel, oil: $68,500, with a building rental offset. Electrical: $169,500, with a food service offset. Water: $5,000. Sewage: $1,500, with a building rental offset. Telephone: $2,000. Building repair and maintenance: $10,000. Custodial supplies: $9,000. Total support costs: $312,563. Total building costs: $4349,560.74. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Joe. And now, we have the Swanson Road Intermediate School, Susan Lopez.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Principal and assistant principal: $195,700. Secretaries: $68,982. Instructional staff: special education teachers: $306,778. Regular education teachers: $1,678,271. Specialists: $494,584.20. Guidance counselors: $130,507. Instructional assistants: special education: $307,136. Regular education instructional assistants: $74,220. ABAs: $61,730. Custodians: $134,989. Excuse me, nurse: $59,292. New positions: the tech media specialist: $49,848. The LPN: $29,292. Contracted services would be the subtotal cost of $23,924. Total salary: $3615,256.11. Substitutes: $45,500. Postage: $600. Principal office supplies: $3,700. Printing supplies: $14,200. Principal dues: $1,500. Principal's professional development: $5,500. Classroom supplies: $45,394. 504 supplies: $500. Art supplies: $2,000. Staff travel: $100. Textbooks: $1,500. Library supplies and books: $2,000. Audiovisual supplies: $2,000. Guidance supplies: $1,000. Fuel, oil, and propane: $35,600. Electrical: $41,828. Water: $5,206. Sewage: $2,747. Telephone: $1,057. Building repair and maintenance: $25,000. Custodial supplies: $12,767. Relocation costs: $10,000. Total support costs: $214,202. Total building costs: $3874,956.13. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Yes, thank you, Susan. And now for Packerchog School, parentheses, Mary D. Stone School, Beth Chase.
Thank you. Principal: $104,500. Secretary: $34,491.38. Instructional staff: special education teachers: $292,051. Regular education teachers: $684,941. Guidance counselor: $61,524. Custodians: $89,992. Instructional assistants, starting with special education: $80,602. Regular education instructional assistants: $99,009. ABA assistants: $220,054.27. Math paraprofessional: $19,056. Nurse: at the Packerchog School: $59,292.2. Preschool LPN: $14,363.96. New position: kindergarten inclusion instructional assistant: $15,100. Contracted services: $10,347. Total salary: $1938,145. Substitutes: $10,500. Postage: $300. Principal's office supplies: $2,000. Printing supplies: $7,025. Principal dues: $770. Principal's professional development: $1,500. Classroom supplies: $19,775. 504 supplies: $250. Art supplies: $1,000. Staff travel: $100. Textbooks: $750. Library supplies and books: $1,000. Audiovisual supplies: $1,000. Guidance supplies: $500. Fuel, oil, propane: $20,000. Electrical: $19,750. Water: $2,350. Sewage: $650. Telephone: $1,780. Building repair and maintenance: $16,126. Custodial supplies: $4,855. Relocation costs: $5,000. Total support costs: $106,481, for total building cost of $255,126.
Thank you, Beth. And now for Bryn Mawr School, we have Beth Chamberlain.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Principal: $100,250. Secretary: $34,491. Special education instructional staff: $183,652. Regular education instructional staff: $747,708. Guidance: $52,339. Specialists: $179,939. Instructional assistants special education: $201,361. Math paraprofessional: $19,056. Regular education instructional assistants: $93,913. ABA assistants: $53,582. Custodians: $89,992. Nurse: $67,792. New positions: two special education instructional assistants: $30,200. Contracted services: $7,278. Total salary: $1861,557. Substitutes: $19,500. Principal office supplies: $1,745. Postage: $300. Principal's professional development: $4,000. Principal's dues: $875. Classroom supplies: $20,075. Art supplies: $1,000. Printing supplies: $7,850. Staff travel: $100. Textbooks: $750. Library supplies and books: $1,000. Audiovisual supplies: $1,000. Guidance supplies: $500. 504 supplies: $250. Fuel, oil, propane: $15,300. Electrical: $14,885. Water: $2,595. Sewage: $672. Telephone: $600. Building repair and maintenance: $11,840. Custodial supplies: $4,500. Total support costs: $89,837. Total building costs: $1970,894. Thank you.
Thank you, Beth. And now we have athletics and fine arts, Eileen Donahue.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Supervisor in physical education and health: $92,000 with an offset of $50,000, for a total of $42,000. Three new positions: the assistant girls' hockey coach: $3,134. An assistant boys' lacrosse coach: $2,660. And an assistant girls' lacrosse coach: $2,660. Contracted services: $500. Athletic department office supplies: $460. Postage: $300. Athletic directors' dues: $290. Athletic and physical education classroom supplies: $5,000. High school athletics transportation: $58,000. Game management and ice time: $32,927. Game management tickets and officials. Game management tickets and officials, $3,500. Coaches professional development, $1,000. Athletics reconditioning, $14,000. Middle school officials, $2,000. Middle school transportation, $4,000. And middle school equipment, $4,000. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Eileen. Now, for central administration, there'll be three people presenting, and they'll be going back and forth. For teaching, learning, and curriculum, it'll be Kathy Lozé. Special education, Howie Barber. Business office, Howie Barber. And technology, Eric Bouvier.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Superintendent of schools, $168,920. Administrative assistant to the superintendent, $28,688. Assistant superintendent for teaching, learning, and curriculum, $118,500. Director of special education, $105,000. Business manager, $105,000. Assistant to business manager, $52,000. Secretaries, $78,260.85. Sub-schedule a district-wide, $7,500. ELL tutors, $95,280. Bookkeeper, $52,000. Technology support and maintenance, $72,200. Director of technology, $88,750. District data coordinator, $52,000. Custodian, $22,498.20. Math coaches, $36,149. New position, a .5 FTE for technology support, $24,700. Contracted services, $6,364.
Per district-wide costs, legal notices, $1,000. Census, $750. Legal services, $9,500. System-wide travel, $15,000. Teacher salary retirement, $123,139. Crossing guards, $45,000. Transportation for special ed, $474,667.80. Transportation for community service learning, $12,000. Degree changes, $154,118. Other contractual obligations, $564,879.7. Site managers, $10,000. Total district-wide costs, $1,410,053.87. School committee costs, school committee dues, $9,000. For the superintendent's costs, superintendent's postage, $6,000. Superintendent's supplies, $6,000. Superintendent's dues, $3,000. Superintendent's publications, $250. Total superintendent's costs, $15,250. Business manager's costs, business manager's computer supplies, $100. Business manager's office supplies, $250. Business office travel, $100. Business manager's dues, $750. Business manager's professional development, $1,500. The annual audit, $4,000. Total business manager costs, $6,700. Thank you, moderator.
Director of technology costs, director's professional development, $1,500. Director's dues, $500. Technician travel, $664. Computer maintenance contracted services, $18,859.81. Computer software contracted services, $115,872 for a total director of technology cost
Assistant superintendent for teaching, learning, and curriculum costs, system-wide professional development, $85,000. System-wide professional supplies, $2,000. System-wide classroom supplies, $5,000. Substitute staff, the system-wide professional development, $10,000. Assistant superintendent's professional development, $1,500. Assistant superintendent's supplies, $1,000. Assistant superintendent's dues, $850. Assistant superintendent's publications, $300. District-wide ebooks, $0 due to an offset of $10,000. District-wide textbooks, $75,000 for total cost of $188,650. English learner education costs, translators, $4,000. Teaching supplies, $5,000. Testing supplies, $1,000. And English learner education staff travel, $100 for a total of $10,100.
For the director of pupil services costs, the director's salary, director's supplies, $0 as it's an offset for Medicaid funds. Staff travel, $0 as it's offset with Medicaid funds. Director's professional development, $0 with an offset for Medicaid funds. Director's dues, $0 with an offset Medicaid funds. Total health service costs, health service contracted services, $900. Physician stipends, $5,000. Health services supplies, $3,000. Nurses substitutes, $2,500. Nurses conferencing, conferences, $500. Nurses travel, $100 for a total of $12,000. Fuel and oil, $22,800. Custodial supplies, $2,575. Building repair and maintenance, $6,026. Telephone, $6,500 for a subtotal of $53,743.40 with total supply costs of $1,834,893.80 and total building costs of $2,948,221. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Oh, thank you. Now we have facility management, Joe Fahey.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Facility director, $88,500. Maintenance mechanic, $21,375. Contracted services, $240. Total salary, $110,115. Building security, $20,000. Equipment repairs district-wide, $5,000. Equipment services, contracted services district-wide, $45,707. Fire extinguisher inspections, $1,872. Maintenance staff miles, $2,000. Truck gas and maintenance system-wide, $4,000. Custodial overtime district-wide, $10,000. Total support cost, $88,579. Total building cost district-wide, $198,694. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, Joe. Yes?
Mark Mall, precinct four. How much money you adding to your maintenance job this year?
How much more we adding?
Yeah.
Well, we're taking two buildings offline. They were merging them into the middle school, so without doing some serious math, I can get back to you on that.
Okay. Just make sure you got enough money to keep your buildings up, new buildings. Okay, thank you.
We've taken the estimates that we got from the project, from what they estimate our utilities to be, and they feel pretty comfortable that we're in those guidelines.
That's good. Okay.
Thank you, Mark. And now, finally, pupil services, Howie Barber.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. For district-wide related service providers, $153,686.45. For district-wide psychologists, $145,260. For team chairperson, $297,864. For behavioral specialists, $30,659. Speech therapists, $207,583. New positions, psychologists for grades pre-K to second grade, $38,254. For district-wide speech pathologist, $12,203. For contracted services, $46,332. For a total salary of $931,841.45. Home tutoring district-wide, $0 as it's paid through grants. Contracted services, $0 as paid through federal grants. Psych testing services, $0 as offset by Medicaid funds. Classroom supplies, $0 as paid through federal grants. Homeless transportation, $0 as offset by Medicaid funds. Spent in-school transportation, $200,000. My fault. Non-public school transportation, $230,000. Tuition mass public schools, $31,837. Tuition non-public schools, $242,88. Tuition spent collaborative, $87,728. The total support costs, $791,653. And total program cost of $1,723,494.45. Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Thank you, and thank you all. That concludes this public hearing. I don't have any pages, so I don't know.
I can do it if you need. You have it, okay.
Okay, then we aren't quite concluded. This is now athletics and fine arts.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Moderator. Team equipment, $16,000. Supplies, training, and first aid, $4,249. Athletic awards, $5,746. Athletic insurance, $9,200. MIAA and SWCL dues, $5,656. Music and fine arts, fine arts office supplies, department heads, $565. Fine arts travels, teachers, and department heads, $525. Fine arts dues, department heads, $135. Music and fine arts classroom supplies, $8,800. Transportation for fine arts, $9,350. Music staff dues, $3,000. Awards and fine arts, $900. Music staff dues, $900. Awards, fine arts, $1,800. Fine arts equipment, repair, and maintenance, $2,500. Band uniforms, $2,500. Band equipment, $33,000. And total support cost, $200,302. Total program cost, $475,000,120.3.
Thank you. And I think that now does conclude.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator.
Am I correct?
You did.
Okay, thank you all.